So this is our working group of the Board of Commissioners and the Election Board, and thank you all for being here. I would like to just start off with a, I think, a good question for the Election Board, and others can chime in, of course, but just to get the ball rolling. Given the Allen County presentation last week at your meeting, is that something where they've gone to the Coliseum in Fort Wayne for their election processes? Is that something that the Election Board wants us to look into with the Convention Center?
Well, that was for early voting only, I believe.
Okay. Well, yes, because it's not where they do their business, right? That's not their business office, right? Okay.
Right.
Is that something you all want us to look into?
I'll let Nicole speak to that.
So, thank you, Mr. Howe. One of the things that happened that I wanted to do in anticipation of this meeting was kind of float some space, various places for potential satellite locations around town, similar to what Allen County has done. They were kind enough to take a conference call with a couple of members of my team, and we got what worked for them, what didn't work for them. And so I tried to divide the county into quadrants and then thirds, and look for satellite spaces that could possibly serve for one week of early voting of the four places, and that includes Election Central. I have bipartisan support for one place, which puts me in the same position that I was in five years ago, which is, it would appear that I was favoring one side of town over another. So if I, I'm happy to float the bipartisan, to see if I have bipartisan support for the Convention Center. But that would be the only other place other than Election Central. And my impression was you did not want something specifically downtown. I'd ask if you were going to intercede on our behalf to keep in mind that they have to be available during both the primary and the general for it to be a successful satellite. They have, and right now, I think we're talking that last week of early voting before Election Day.
So, well, going back to the Allen County example, they moved all of their operations to the Coliseum. Is that, is that something you want us to look into with the Convention Center? I don't know what their availability is right now. So this is all just about requesting information from them. But, and what, and what kind of timeframe would, or what kind of timeframe would you want to use that space for? There's a lot of parking, it's running out of downtown, it's on a bus line, but...
Well, we actually had done a little bit of the legwork on that with respect to training, because I think I said on a previous, on a previous work session that we didn't know what we didn't know as far as how much space we needed for poll worker training until we had that space available to us in one of the event rooms at the Convention Center. We have found out that, now, I apologize in advance, it's either not available during the primary or not available during the general. And again, it has to be both for it to be viable. And I feel like they told us something about the football team taking, that's where they make their money, and, you know, out of town teams. So we could not have it for that time that we would need the several weeks that we do poll worker training. So the only other thing would be if they were available that last week during both the primary and the general. And I don't get the, I think that's the week that's in conflict. I don't get the impression that we would get the Convention Center. But by all means, if you have any influence, then we could certainly consider the Convention Center. I'd be happy to see if we have bipartisan support for that.
Okay. All right, and then, okay. So so one of the things that could be done would be to, because we do have space at Showers Building now, and we'll have more in the future, is to move, one option would be to move some of the operational side of voter reg and things like that to Showers, giving you more space for e-poll books, and then you can use the rest of that first floor for voting, moving out storage and moving out the ballot processing to something like NAPA or somewhere else. That's another option as well, which would give you a lot more space for early voting on the first floor of the Johnson Hardware Building.
So the north end of the showers, I am certainly open to. It's not ideal, and I know that I'll probably say that a lot, but I would be open to processing mail ballots in that, if we're talking about that area that we would have had in 2016 on the north end of the showers, I would be open to that for the processing of mail ballots. My hope, of course, would be to keep the ballots under one roof, but as close as I can together between the two buildings would be the next best thing. And here's what's, you know, I've got the kind of team, we can make anything work, and we have, and we will. It's not optimal in terms of ballot integrity and keeping everything together. Howe, I see you nodding, so I don't want to step on you if there's something that you want to share.
Just a thought, I wanted to ask if the north end of showers is alarmed? Is there an entrance alarm on there?
I think we could put something on the doors, on individual office doors, if we needed to, like we did with the, I'm guessing now. But I'm thinking we could do that, because we did that with the NatU Hill Room, where you'd have to have a D and an R to get in, you know, to swipe cards to get in at the same time.
Yeah.
I would imagine that we could get something like that installed. Jeff, can you, Jeff Cockrell, could you, could you remind me how much space we have now in showers that we know for next year? I know we've got highway moving out, but not in time for the primary.
Give me a second, let me check.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. I've got, I've got two sets of numbers, and I want to make sure I have the correct info. But we now control that parking lot there, which we didn't before, right? So that's, that's a real benefit. And, yeah, so Angie's saying, yeah, we could probably do those, that same swipe lock that we put on the NatU Hill Room for the ballot processing. In 2020, we could have that same kind of lock on any door inside the Showers Building that you'd want.
And certainly that, you know, having that alarm system or swipe system would be, would be helpful. And again, we're happy to look at, I'm hopeful, Commissioner, that when we talk about this, that we are on a path to something that gets us closer to best practices, where we can eventually get everything under, under one roof. And I'm hopeful, I knew, I know you guys had meetings to go to last week. I'm hopeful that you could clarify when you said "not at this time."
Yeah.
Elaborate on what you meant.
Well, I, I just think that we, we don't have, we have not yet, we're still going through that system of going through the justice, criminal justice reform study recommendations, and we don't know what that's going to mean in terms of building space downtown related to the courts and all of the criminal justice functions. So we're ways away from that. And that, that could be a very expensive proposition, which could also add more time to getting things done, unfortunately. So I think that's, I think that's what's meant by "not yet," because we have a lot of plate spinning related to criminal justice, and that could include probation, and it might not, but it could. And so, yeah.
I certainly understand spinning plates, and nowhere do plates spin more than elections. Well, I won't say nowhere, because you have spinning plates as well. What I'll say, Commissioner, and to all the Commissioners, I have always been hopeful for a path, you know, by way of compromise. I did not wake up at all expecting, oh, one day we're going to inherit the entirety of Election Central in the Johnson Hardware Center. But a path to that, a path to best practices would be a win-win for your office, my office, and the community. And I, you know, what happens for me, and, you know, I appreciate the transparency of this meeting, is that my voters see the Commissioners buying and selling real estates. Every week, the published notices, I had one voter say to me, you know, I didn't even realize that the Commissioners were in the real estate business. And so, you know, I, I understand the difficulty and the spinning plates of trying to navigate two huge projects. And so all I'm hopeful for is that everything that we discuss in terms of making things work, I think it's all possible, because I have an amazing team, but that it be on a path to best practices.
Well, can, maybe it would be helpful to think about the various space needs. Oh, Jeff, maybe you have that number for us?
I think the number is 2,702.
That sounds, that's one of my numbers, that sounds right.
And I think that the highway space that's not included in that is roughly, is probably close to that number, maybe a little bit less.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
And to save you some legwork, Commissioner, I did end up getting a text that the Convention Center is not available. I thought that, I just wanted somebody to confirm my memory. It isn't, that space is not available the week before elections in 2022. So it would not be a viable site, which brings us back to
Okay.
one area.
Okay. Well, okay, thank you. So so is, is 2,700 square feet, and it may be more by the November election, but for sure, right now, we have 2,700 square feet at Showers Building. Does that help get you closer to what you need to clear out the downstairs space for more voters? Is that what, is that helpful?
Or it would be amenable to processing those mail ballots. I'm sure that you all are aware of the exponentially increased number of requests for mail ballots during early in absentee. And we did struggle to contain that to one building. And so I am amenable, as I said, on a path to best practices to utilize that, the north end of the Showers Building for that purpose, particularly with the alarms and security. My whole, I don't know what the camera situation would be like in that area, but certainly we would want to be able to trace a path back to any bad actor who would attempt to access that area.
Okay. We can work on that. And that's preferable to you than to have an entire building that's entirely under your control, like the NAPA Building?
I, I am open to utilizing the NAPA Building for some of the things that we requested the top floor. But I have concerns about that area as well, as I said in one of my presentations. It is not very far from that fire station that flooded and still is not in use. By no means am I pretending to be a meteorologist or somebody who can speak to severe weather. But, you know, my, my position has always been, if I had had that top floor, or I have a path to that top floor in the event of something like that, which I hadn't seen for a long, long time, I would not be worried about that just under a million dollars' worth of voting equipment being damaged due to severe, severe weather. So I would be open to it on a path, because it keeps, it has it downtown, to get to my, the poll worker training, to allow people to come in and practice, to get it out to those 34 polling sites, because our vendors deliver that equipment, they deliver it the day before elections, set it up to have it ready to go for elections, and then go back the day after. And I think the central location to be able to deal with that equipment would be preferential than going back and forth to Ellisville at the storage unit where it is now. Does that make sense?
Yep, and I, and I think we can go back and look at, I mean, that last June flood was pretty horrendous all across the county. I'm not sure much, too many places in the county were spared from floodwaters, but I, but I know that, for example, that area where the fire station flooded out is related to that underground movement of the Jordan, the Jordan River goes underground, and it's related to the pipes and that situation as well. So I don't...
Sorry, Commissioner, does that Jordan River not go through? Is that house kind of looking, a house across from the Convention Center? It's, I think it's painted blue now, it wasn't always painted blue.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it crosses, yeah, it crosses over at an angle. Yeah, we'd have to look at that. But I think, so I know that we had some flooding at our health building in June, and we had at the bottom floor, the very basement of the, of the health building. And we had some flooding in the doorway on the first floor of Showers, where it comes in off the parking lot at Parks and Rec.
Correct, that stopped just short of where my electronic poll books are. That's quite a lot of money invested in those electronic poll books that you all authorized, you know, you signed the contract for us to buy.
Yeah, yeah. So, oh, gosh, Howe has lost audio. Howe, you might want to log out and log back in.
Okay. I think while, while that's happening, I think, I don't want to speak for Howe, but I think one of the things, we had questions to just clarify. I guess, Nicole, just to clarify, what you're saying in part is that contiguous space or connected space is more valuable than pieces of space, right? Or pieces in different buildings, even if it adds up to more square footage. And then that we want to be really careful of flooding. Is that correct?
That is correct, that is what I have said. And so that's kind of why I keep circling back to, you know, a path to what I'm, what I'm asking for, taking into account the number of spinning plates that you also have. Yeah, a path to contiguous and contained space would be best practice.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Giffens, did you have other questions or suggestions?
I have, I have one. You know, you've been talking about it would, what would, to me, would require remodeling some of the Johnson Hardware Building. That's a very old building, and I wonder what kind of structural changes it could actually tolerate, whether it's a vault for certain things, or, you know, just moving, moving rooms around. What can it actually tolerate in terms of what your needs are?
That's, that's an excellent question. Certainly, from my perspective, and I did not get a degree in architecture, but from my perspective, it would be less costly for us to remodel that. I think that in some instances, we're just looking at taking out non, let me make sure I'm using the right term from my HGTV watching, non-load-bearing walls to create, am I right? Is that the right term? So that we have more room. And then, a lot of it, of course, we're talking about storage, so we're not talking about people and, and equipment. We're talking about the storage of equipment that needed to be taken care of. And at most, our vendors coming in to deal with that equipment and, you know, moving, moving stored ballots and other things during election season. Glad to see you, Howe.
Glad you made it back.
I made that make sense, sorry.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything?
You're muted still.
Sorry, I always do that. At some point, someone, I'm not sure if it was you, Clerk Brown, or someone else, mentioned that you actually had a plan for putting extra doors into the Johnson Building. Could you describe that a little bit?
I don't know anything about extra doors, Commissioner Jones. What I said was there would be more egresses. I mean, and this is just as simple as walking around. There's multiple doors on the bottom floor, which is how there's access to other offices, as well as, as well as Election Central. So one of those doors, we would be hopeful to, to use to change, switch our ballot room, so that it would go from where you know it to be now over to the area, there's no other way for me to describe it immediately except that phone area where our early in absentee voters are working and taking those calls from people. The statute says if the clerk has control, you can use it as a place to drop off your ballot. So instead of a doorknob outside of that door, which is what we have right now, we could put a slot there, and then that would be under the clerk's control. And so if you deliver a ballot after we have closed for the day, then we can take control of that ballot, because no other office would access that. Excuse me. I can tell I'm stepping on something, Commissioner Thomas.
Oh, no, not at all. I'm actually thinking, I'm actually thinking we could do what we have outside of the courthouse itself on the north side, is we have this subterranean drop box where people are putting a lot of money for payments to the treasurer and putting in information for the recorder's office. So I'm wondering if we could do something like that. I don't know what the state statute allows, because I know it's different for elections, but I wonder if we could do something like that outside of the Johnson Hardware Building. So that would be something that we could look into.
You want to be able, for it to be, I don't know anything about drawing this kind of thing, but you want to be able to get an envelope with a ballot in, but not hands, which was the problem with our door right at Seventh and Madison, is that it was felt that people could fish, fish out ballots that had fallen to the floor. Some of you may remember a receptacle that we had to accept those ballots, and then we would have a bipartisan team go out every day and collect those ballots, and then bring them inside and process them. But, you know, some non-well-meaning person with a lot more time on their hands than I have could figure out a way to fish those ballots back through. It really is the place where weekend mail is dropped off when we're closed for the weekend. So we, we would like to move that and then have control, which would increase the ability for voters to drop something off, not during banker's hours, because as you duly pointed out, not everybody is available during those times. And so for those people that come seven, eight, nine o'clock at night, then they can be assured of the integrity of their ballot, because it is completely under clerk's control. And then I'm also, Commissioner Jones, talking about that next door over, which is, would, could be an egress if we had, if we were able to take down non-load-bearing walls. And we used that room, as you know, to process ballots in a bipartisan fashion. And so we'd have several doors that you could go out. The one to the top floor, and I know that we're not talking about that now, I'm just saying that it exists, could be where our vendors who transport our equipment could pull their trucks up there and load and unload equipment with access to, to that top floor. So, so there are multiple doors in addition to the one we already have, which is the one egress out at the southern southeastern portion of the Johnson Hardware Building. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I'd also, I, I just want to mention, and I'm not an engineer, and I know nothing at all about this, but someone did mention to me that in actual fact, the top floor of the Johnson Building is also a ground-level floor, and possibly could flood there also. Now, I'm not saying it would, I'm just saying that, that this might be something we would want to check into before going too far with this.
Can you say that again, the top floor, the second floor?
Yeah, it's actually at a ground level. That's right on a very kind of steep slope right there. And they built it up. It probably would not, from what I've seen of it. But I think, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say, I'm not trying to affect things right now at all. I'm just saying that I think it would be wise to look into that at some point.
We would be appreciative.
So can we, so the attorney that works for your department is Lee Baker, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, so maybe we need to see if Lee Baker can look into whether or not we could put another subterranean drop box outside the Johnson Hardware Building for ballots, whether that would be considered legal or not by the state statute. And, and that's something where it is very secure, because we're, people are putting money in it, people are putting cash, people are putting checks into that, into that drop box outside the courthouse, and it's, and it's sufficiently engineered and underground, so that it is secure. You can't fish anything out of there.
So I can, I can save you a little bit of legwork, because clerks are drilled on this, and, and this could be semantics, Commissioner Thomas. So I want to be sure of what, what you mean when you say subterranean. The, the soundbites in that sound like underground to me. But a drop box, it was drilled into the clerk's heads. A drop box is not acceptable unless it is completely attached, like, attached to the building. So, so in a lot of other counties where the courthouse, the clerk's office is housed in the actual county courthouse, they do have drop boxes where, when you put your ballot in after the courthouse has closed, nobody can access it but the clerk. That doesn't sound like what you're talking about. That doesn't sound like what you're talking about.
No, so, but, but Angie, if you could have Greg, Greg Crone look into something for the Johnson Hardware building, that would be great, if there's some way to do something attached. See if we can make sure we get the, yeah, thank you, thanks Angie.
I, I mean, I could be looking at it wrong, like Commissioner Jones. I too do not have an engineering degree, but in my mind, you're talking about a simple chain, switching out that door so that it has a means to, no handle for somebody to pull and try to come in, but a slot only large enough to accommodate an envelope with a ballot in it that drops into, because then it would be under the full control of both of us.
Right, it'd have to be some sort of lock container. Okay, so, so Angie knows what to look for. So, so for, so just to clarify where we're at. So for, and, and clearly the satellite issue is something for the election board to deal with and outside of our purview. But again, if you need assistance, reaching out to, you know, fire stations or other places in the community, just let us know, we're happy to help. But as far as administering the elections for 2022, if we can get you the 2,700 square feet at North Showers, possibly more for the fall if you need it. And then the Napa Building for training. And you can also use it, there's also an upper level for storage in the Napa Building, there's like a.
I think actually the stairway to that has been removed, so.
Ah, okay, I was gonna say, I don't think, I don't think you, yeah, you know, I don't think we want to use it for storage because there's no lift system to get up there, so that, I don't think that's gonna work anyway, okay. So, so the Napa Building is there for training and/or storage. So, and then we can make the, we can look into making a modification for a drop box attached inside the building.
I have seen this hyperlink that it looks like Ms. Angie sent out. I think that is kind of what I'm talking about. If there's a slot on the outside and then that box is on the inside, being able to be accessed by a bipartisan team. Sorry, Mr. Hal.
We would also, also need, also need some video of that.
A camera.
A camera.
Okay, so back to, back to what I was saying. So if we do those three things, Showers Building, Napa Building, the drop box camera system for Johnson Hardware downstairs, is there anything else you need for 2022 space-wise or any remodeling that you need done in the Johnson Hardware Building on the main floor to get through 2022 elections?
Okay, let me, let me talk through what I understand you to have said. We would have Napa at our disposal for storage of voting equipment, training purposes, poll worker training purposes. We would have the north end of Showers Building on the second floor for the processing of mail ballots. Each would, we would need each place outfitted with the kind of security. I call it Cadillac security, and that, that means it's not cheap to ensure that we have a way to address bad actors because you're talking about people knowing exactly where our voting equipment is, exactly where we're gonna be processing those ballots. And, and then the entirety of the bottom floor of Johnson Hardware with the door, the one door being outfitted to accommodate mail ballots.
I don't, so Angie, do you want to step in here? It's not the entirety of the first floor of Johnson Hardware. It's the entirety of the first floor that you already have in Johnson Hardware. Right, it's that, it's all the space you currently have at Johnson Hardware, but we're moving components out so that you have more space for checking voters in and, and having people vote early.
And then I'm not sure about the door. Because actually what I'm thinking is, what would be ideal is if we could get this drop box issue through a wall and so that it wouldn't have to affect a door at all, so I just wanted to share that.
Okay, so, so you're, you're talking about the space. I, I guess on a previous work session or presentation, I, I guess I understood you to have said the entirety of the main floor where, when you kept saying if we can get you that. I didn't think you were talking about space we already had. But like I said, I, and what I kind of want to make clear, we can make it work for 2022 if it is on a path to best practices, meaning maybe an incremental acquisition of more space.
Yeah, I'm just focused on getting us through 2022 and I know that, that nothing is perfect. Nothing is ideal. I just want to make sure that if we need to do any remodeling or anything else, that we know about it as soon as possible because it's very hard to get contractors right now.
Of, of course, of course, and we, we have talked about that. I, I would certainly hope that you would give us some time to talk this through and look at how we can best utilize that space. Because we have more room, sorry.
Sure, no, no, that's okay. And I was gonna say, and then I've got in my notes, double swipe systems for North Showers and Napa Building. You know, the Cadillac security and then cameras at the outside, wherever that drop box ends up being, if it's in the building or in the door. Camera system there, camera system, North Showers, camera system at Napa as well?
Yes, that's, that's about a million dollars worth of voting equipment that the entirety of Monroe County would know where it was housed.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify again, just to step back for a moment. My understanding as well from our previous meetings were that you were, when you mentioned the whole first floor of Johnson Hardware, that you meant giving the, you know, for voting purposes, the whole, yeah, the whole first floor. And so I didn't, I just wanted a clarification as to now you're saying something different? Or can you just clarify what you're saying now about the first floor?
Angie, can you clarify that? I, I don't have the square footage with me.
I don't, I really can't clarify that. I actually think that what happened was during a presentation, a commissioner said, you know, mentioned the possibility of the entire first floor, but it was never stated as a fact. It was just kind of mentioned as if it was possible. That's my recollection.
Okay, and if I could add to that recollection, what I heard was the second floor of Johnson Hardware is unavailable, which left doubt and questions about the availability of the first floor.
So Angie, what's on the first floor that can't be moved right now? Let's do it that way.
Okay, yeah, the first floor is the juvenile, is the juvenile probation department. I'm not aware of anything other than the juvenile probation department on the first floor at this point in time, but that's, that's who's there.
And the square footage is?
I have no, oh.
You had sent it, I thought it was small.
Yeah, it's not big, I think it's two, maybe three offices in a hallway.
Yeah.
And a bathroom.
Yeah.
And also Ms. Purdy, I believe one of the work sessions where we discussed it was the one where I was speaking about, you know, what we had bipartisan support for and not. And that was where I believe I heard that statement about the first floor. In case you want to go back and check the records.
So to circle back, Commissioner Thomas, we, we can figure out how to make this work for 2022. And if, if we're on the same page for that, and we can discuss the remodeling so that we can get as many opportunities for voters to vote safely, distantly, we're happy to do so. We were very fortunate in 2020, as I think Mr. Hal, I've had to ask him for the stats several times, but I think he said one voter every six seconds. Please nod, Hal, if that's right. No, it is not.
No, it was one voter every 45 seconds.
Forty-five seconds, I don't know where I got six. I'm so sorry, Mr. Hal, that's all me. Every forty-five seconds.
But six seconds is a good goal.
It would be a great goal, wouldn't it? And so I'm very proud of having done that, Commissioner Thomas. That is the result of great teamwork. It is the result of taking, making the best of a horrific situation, which I would like not to have to revisit in 2022. But here's the truth, I turn on different news channels and hear different things. We, some people say we get, we're getting past this pandemic. Some people say we are not getting past this pandemic. I don't know what 2022 is going to bring. And now I'm, I'm letting you know for the record, I don't believe that I am going to have bipartisan support for satellite facilities to take that pressure off of Election Central. Because one would, would be favoring a particular area of the community. And so we will make it work for 2022, I'm assuring you we will. But again, I am, I am pleading for a path to best practices, which is everything under one roof.
Heard you, thank you. And I think, so then we just will, we'll just work through Angie and Greg Crone for any of the building facility issues. And, and then it looks like if you need anything remodeled, once, you know, take a look at, at your space now at Election Central and if you need something remodeled, to please let us know as soon as possible so that we could try to get it done. And, you know, because if you imagine your ballot processing somewhere else, then the question is, how does that space work for you? So that's just something you all need to, to figure out and just let us know and we'll do our best. So obviously no guarantees on that because we, we don't know if the contractor situation's getting better or worse at any given moment. But, so is there, is there any, anything else? And then we can keep this conversation going to continue working on preparing the way for the space to be utilized for 2022.
If I could just say a quick word about satellite locations. Of the ones we reviewed, we, we were not unanimous. But this effort doesn't have to stop at this point. We can still keep looking at other locations for satellite voting.
And yeah, and if you, and again, if you need assistance with any of that, just let us know. And, and we're happy to go with you to counsel to request the funding for the additional poll workers it'll take to have satellite locations.
And believe me, I will ask you for that support. Here's the problem is that the, the different precincts that we have to consider are too far apart to get one, one facility to accommodate all of those precincts. I tried quadrants, since we've gotten off the phone with Allen County and looked at their best practices. I, I tried to divide it up into quadrants, I tried to divide it up into thirds and just bring everybody to the middle. There, there is, there, it's, it's difficult. It, it is difficult. And so it's, it sounds like it's completely off the table for the convention center because they are not available the last week, which is when we would be doing it. I'm looking at, one of the things Allen County suggested is to make it a place where we would not normally do it. Do, it would not be a normal polling site because that would be confusing to voters. So we're, we're running out of, we're running out of options, putting us back to five years ago where we only had bipartisan support for one building. And, and that's not helpful when you have a community because they're not gonna say, you know, oh, we couldn't get bipartisan support. They're gonna say, Nicole, you favored one part of Monroe County over another and that's not fair.
Yeah, I hear that.
And I guess I would ask for additional clarification because I think clerk background, I think the way you put it was really helpful. And since I wasn't on the board five years ago, I guess I would like clarification about what's different from the proposals that were discussed today and the situation five years ago. Like where has there been additional space added since five years ago? And what are the proposals to add more space currently on the table? That would be really helpful to me, thank you.
So Professor Rana, thank you. Five years ago, I, I was just coming in, having been caucused in as clerk, and I didn't know what I didn't know at the time. And we were trying to pull together sites, different satellite facilities. And so, for example, a satellite facility at the university is considered to favor one party. A satellite in a more rural area is considered to benefit another party. And so the only place five years ago where I had complete and unequivocal bipartisan support was the north end of the showers. And, and I've documented on other meetings the issues that we found with that. And either two or three weeks ago, my chief deputy was kind enough to, I asked her to put the commissioners in remembrance of the difficulties we had. And it's not even just difficulties with my older and disabled voters who were trying to access that top floor, where we even put a sheriff to direct them. But I even had a young voter that I happen to know, who she's, this year she's doing an internship in showers. But to go to her internship, which is on the southern end of showers, for whatever reason, she has to go in to the north end of showers. And she was telling me about a drop off that she nearly trips over every time she goes from the north end of the showers to the south end of the showers. And she's 21 years old, very able-bodied, but struggles with that. So she said to me, when I asked her for feedback on that, she said to me, if I struggle and I nearly trip over my own feet, I cannot imagine what it would be like for a person who had to have a walker or a wheelchair or something trying to get to where we needed them to vote. So it has been difficult for me to embrace, keeping in mind everything we, we did struggle with five years ago and it not being successful. Difficult for me to embrace using that as an early voting site this year. I'm hopeful I made that make sense for you.
In the past, that, the one, and I don't remember what year it was, maybe it was 2008. There, so the satellite locations were in Ellisville and also the Indiana Memorial Union, right?
I don't recall a satellite in the Indiana Memorial, I want to say reunion, union. I was not clerk at that time. And even the previous clerk was not clerk at that time. So you're talking about under Jim Fielder and Pat Haley. So I, I can't say that I have recollection about a satellite. What I will tell you is my current election supervisor, who is taking some well-deserved time off this week, refreshed my memory when the previous clerk tried to do a roving satellite. So she did three days in one place on the west side, three days on the north side, east side, south side. And it, it, it too was a failure. And I had hoped that she would be in a position to speak to the election board to just, you know, we, we have tried to make satellites work. But again, it, it's. Um, but again, it, it's, it's, it's a big.
Yeah, it's, it's hard. Yeah, I think, I think it's, yeah, you, it can be confusing if you're roving and yeah, I can see that. Um, but, so two things. Um, I think, I think the drop-off you're talking about is with a curb and we're actually addressing that in the short term, I believe. But we now, unlike in the past, we now actually own that parking lot. In the past, we had to rely on the city to, um, allow us to utilize that for voters. And so we can, because it's our lot now, we could actually, um, uh, tell our employees not to use that parking for a certain time period if you wanted to use the shower, part of the showers building for, uh, a satellite voting center. But, um, I think I know the curb you're talking about and that's something we're addressing. But once somebody's in the building, there is an elevator, which is helpful.
There is an elevator, um, but so, so imagine if you are a disabled voter and I totally get what you're saying about the parking. That you're saying that would not be the issue. But that elevator, if you are on a walker or in a chair that is not motorized, you're having to go in that front door, make your way through a little bit of distance. Perfectly fine for us as able-bodied people, but around the corner to the elevator. It's quite a tiny elevator, going up to the second floor and then having to go, if you get off of that elevator on the second floor, go to your left. We actually hired, we paid somebody to sit there and say, if you're voting early, go this way. It, it is a little bit of a challenge as opposed to something like Election Central where someone on a walker or wheelchair just goes in and you are right there. Here's my driver's license. Yes, this is my precinct and going ahead and voting.
Right, and it, and it may be, and if it came down to it, it may be possible to figure out a way to do something um, on the main floor for folks who, who need that. Um, I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to, if it, if it comes down to it, we can, we can try to figure something out if we have to, but.
And one thing, Commissioner Thomas, I heard you say, and that was what I was trying to take into consideration and ask my team to take into consideration as we looked at potential satellite voting places, was you very clearly, you made very clear, looking at something other than downtown. And so I was trying to find those so that I could come to this meeting. I mean, I came to this meeting in good faith, completely good faith, but to come with something that might be amenable, I don't have that at this time. And if we talk, if we reconsider North Showers, then I'm back in the same situation where I was five years ago and people prefer to stay in line at Election Central.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it does make sense to try to do things outside of the city because not everybody lives or works in the city. So I get that, um, and I understand as well that you need a, you need bipartisan support to do it. So hopefully that, that might happen. So, um, but again, if you need assistance with finding locations or making arrangements or whatever, just let us know and we're, we're happy to do what we can to help you out.
And if you have something that you would like for me to present to both party chairs, I would be happy to do that.
And I guess I have, I have a question. I wanted to thank you both for following up to my question and providing that very helpful information. And part of what I was getting at is that, you know, we've been hearing from voters who voted in 2016 and 2018 and 2020 and are trying to improve things for 2022. So we need to have very specific things that we can say to voters about what has changed and what has expanded. And I guess coming away from our discussion today, um, I wasn't sure what had been changed or expanded except possibly additional space in Napa for storage, ballot storage and possibly poll worker training, which is great, but it's not, you know, when the public comes to vote, they don't see poll worker training or ballot storage. So I just want to be able to go back to the people who, you know, our voting public and the voters of Monroe County and be able to say, here is what we are doing to expand voting space and access for 2022. And that's what I wasn't clear on. So I just wanted to
Okay.
make sure that that was clarified and that we make a big effort to clarify that moving forward in our discussions because I know a lot of people are paying attention. Thank you.
So what, right, and so what we've, what we've talked about is using the showers building for processing of the mail-in ballots, which takes out that, uh, area that you have control over in Election Central and, um, takes that function out of Election Central and gives you more space for, um, voters. Um, so that's, and, and we offered as well, if you wanted to move, um, the offices, uh, the more permanent offices, um, voter registration, um, and the other offices to showers building permanently, that's another option as well. So.
That's not something that I want to consider. That's not.
That's fine. We just wanted to offer whatever, you know, we, we could offer. So.
I think the Dropbox also is a real positive.
Yeah.
Because it expands the hours that people can actually drop off their ballots.
Great. Yes, I think that Dropbox is a real positive as well. But just to be clear, when we proposed moving ballot processing to other buildings, it may be in access to Election Central, but that includes ballot integrity and security. So I just wanted to make sure that trade-off was visible as well.
And, and moving those offices or considering gets away from the whole original request, which is everything under one roof.
Yep, I, I understand. Okay, anything else? So it sounds like we're on a good path for, um, for, we're planning for next year.
I would agree. It's a path for 2022.
Yep, that's all we need to get to today. That's, and that was pretty, that's pretty good because I think we, we got there. I feel like we got there, but maybe we didn't. But, um, let's see if, if, uh, do we need to, um, meet again? Or what would you like to do? Do you want to just wait and see and, um, let us know? How, how do you want to proceed?
I'd like the opportunity to meet with my team to look at what kinds of remodels or renovations we could do. Obviously that would be something we would need to get on sooner rather than later. And then, um, talk about another meeting for, um, next week. Maybe not early next week.
But I didn't understand that.
Oh, excuse me. I don't know what that was. Excuse, that, my phone, I didn't think I was, had my phone on the sound button. Then we can get back to you with what we would hope for as far as renovations, so that we can get started on those sooner rather than later. And I want to send a doodle poll. Oh, we have, do we still have that doodle poll with availability for next week that Ms. Angie sent out? There should be some days on there where we were still free.
I'll have a look at it and see.
Let's not do early. Let's give us time because my election supervisor is out this entire week and I would want her to be a part of those discussions.
So Thursday, Friday?
Thursday rather than Friday would be better.
Yeah, oh, and then I, I also think that something that I was gonna reach out to you guys about is look into those secure, um, cabinets or, um, I don't know what they were called, but, um, I think they're like, uh, they, they can roll out where you can store things. Because I'm thinking of, you know, there's been concern expressed regarding water. Um, so if we could put the election equipment into a storage cabinet that is also secured, you know, locked, um, then, um, that would also, that would serve as a second, a secondary form of protection for that equipment. Just wanted to throw that out there.
I'm happy to, I have spoken to my team twice about that. The clerk who shared that with you had also shared those pictures with me. I floated that twice and was advised that that would not be beneficial for our equipment in Monroe County. I'm happy to revisit it a third time to see if there is any way that we can make it work. But I, I've been advised by people who work with the equipment more than I do that it would not be helpful for us.
All right, good. So we will, um, come back together, um, next week at some point and Angie's got the doodle poll, so she can use that. And, um, and we'll get our next meeting set up and we'll, we'll do the same again and, um, see if we have other ideas or concerns or options that we need to consider in the meantime. Okay? Sound good?
That would be good.
Excellent. Thanks, thanks everyone for, for being here and participating and let's get this rolling. It sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.